Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work session, Mayor Commission work session, budget work session. Today is Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, and the time is 10:00 a.m. And the first item on the agenda is the capital improvement program update. Ms. Johnson, do you want to say anything to tee it up before we dive in, or we're good to go?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, members of the staff and the public. This particular presentation is one that we do on an annual basis to give the board an update on where the FY23 projects stand in terms of their status, and then a look at what is going to be included in the FY24 budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Kevin Valbrecht, Director of Engineering Services. So we're going to go through our capital improvement plan as the city administrator just briefed you on. We've got a lot of stuff cooking out here in the city. We've got about 75 projects that were underway in some state or one state or another, either completed or in progress. And I'm fortunate enough to be able to, we have a capital improvement plan manager that we were able to bring on board, and he's been promoted just in the last three months. And his name is Vladimir Geno. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to him now, so please welcome Vladimir. Thank you.
Congratulations on the promotion, sir.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Good morning, Mayors and Commissioners and everybody else. This morning, as Kevin mentioned, we all go over the capital improvement program. And just what's on today's agenda is that we will do a recap of FY23 program and some of the budget, and then also we'll also look at FY24. So for FY23, we have in the budget about $300 million. And this is how they are booking down with the gas tax, 5.1 million, where 2 million in revenue was allocated for this year. Capital acquisition bond, 15.8 million. Public utilities bond, 39.8. PU replacement, public utility replacement and renewal funds, 81.1. Fire assessment fee, 1.2 million. Parks bond, 26.6 million. Sales tax, 43.7. And we have the CRA bond, 21.8 million. CRA fund, 20.6 million, and grants, about 39.9 million. And for this year, we have 35 projects that either completed or underway, and those total about $39.7 million, including 6.1 million for milling and resurfacing projects. And those are a breakdown of those projects that are currently ongoing or completed. For citywide, we have approximately three projects, and one of them being the title valve phase A for North Lakeside, South Lakeside, 14 and 15 Street, and also the school zone phase three. For Commission District One, we have approximately five projects, and two of them, the one in yellow for the milling and resurfacing that is funded from the Citywide Woodway Improvement Fund, we have two of them, AE Isaac for the third street from Pine Wood to Flagler Drive, and also Notchor Traffic Calming, to name some of the few. Commission District Two, about two, about three projects, and two of them are milling and resurfacing, Village Boulevard and Brendy Wine Road. For District Three, we have about nine projects, most notably Banyan Boulevard Streetcap Phase One. Also, we have the Clematis and Quadro Boulevard Improvement, and also the Roosevelt Estates project, which is the swell, stormwater improvement, and sanitary sewer lining. And for Commission District Four, Apohe Park Parkway Resurfacing. For District Five, we're looking about 13 projects, which five of them are milling and resurfacing projects, South Flagler Paving and Bike Lane, Plamoff Ward, Bradley Street, Suma Street, and Flagler Drive. And those are also funded from the Citywide Woodway Improvement Funds. Now, let's look at some of the pictures to help us to see some of the status of those projects. Banyan Boulevard Phase One, that one is completed from Australian to Quadro Boulevard. Brendy Wine, milling and resurfacing, that project is completed, showing some of the current conditions. Also Village Boulevard, milling and resurfacing. This is Nottingham Miller for water sewer improvement, that work has also been completed. South Flagler Drive, from Southern to Suma, milling and resurfacing, completed. Flamingo Park Neighborhood, Lake Avenue, Belvidia to Park Place, this milling and resurfacing project is currently in progress, and the pictures that we have depicts some of the current conditions. Also Echo Lake Park Playground, that's also in progress. Vedado Park Playground, completed. Those are the title valve phase two A that we mentioned earlier, those are also completed. The HCD Resource Center is also known as the Eva Mac Building, that also is being completed. And that concludes the overview of FY23 projects. Now we'll move on to FY24, and for FY24 program, we can-
Before we go into the next year, I want you all to work with Diane, Director of Communications, because I think the city needs to start patting itself on the back. As we get these projects completed, we need to come up with a strategy for letting the public know that we are getting things done in our city, getting projects done. And so work with my communications staff, and let's come up with a strategy for how we can start getting the word out, whether it's district by district, you know, Diane, you could talk to the district commissioners if they have particular organs or vehicles, platforms they want to use to get the word out. Perhaps it goes out under a letter from them to their constituents, however. But I think we need to come up with a comprehensive, effective strategy for letting the public know that we are getting these projects done. This is a lot of good news here. Okay? So Diane, I think she's somewhere-
She's watching.
Please sit down with staff, and then let's come up with a strategy for getting the word out there.
Mayor, before we move on to FY24, I want to allow, you know, if the board has any questions on a particular project that's underway, or-
Any questions, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. This is excellent news. I'm glad to see all the things happening in all the districts. I just have one question. I know, for example, in Roosevelt Estates, we're a little bit behind on that project, and in some ways partly because we've had some issues with contractors, and I think sending it out to bid and things like that. So I'm curious, I don't know if that is the case citywide, I imagine it is. I know that we're still, not just us as a city, but everyone is a little bit behind because of COVID and catching up on work. But I'm curious, if that is the case, if we're behind on a project that we budgeted for this year, how does it move forward? Are we just keeping it, let's say if it goes into 2024, but it wasn't supposed to, we just know that the budget is coming from 2023, or how does that work?
I'll answer that for you, Commissioner Fox. The money has been budgeted previously, in previous years, it's still in the budget, and we have a contractor in place to complete the roadwork on Seventh Street. We're doing these utility improvements as a prerequisite to getting the Seventh Street work done. And so we are now underway with moving forward with those things. We started the sanitary lining, we started that this week, as well as finishing up the swale grading work. And then the stormwater improvements on Seventh Street are going to probably get started in a couple of months. We finally settled up with the contractor on the price of that, and now we've got to wait about two months to get some materials in, and then we'll get that done before the end of this year. And we hope to be able to start the Seventh Street roadwork and get that project all completed by the middle of next year. So it's all budgeted, it's all in place, and we're ready to move forward with it as soon as we get, we get done with the utility work.
Follow up? Yes.
Thank you so much. But I'm just curious, so in general, I'm assuming that that, there are other projects maybe that are not completed as well for the same reason. So do we just, are we just carrying them over from 2023 budget into the next year and moving on with other projects for the next budget?
So let me-
Go ahead.
Let me just add a footnote here. From a budget standpoint, Commissioner Fox, when the board approves funding for a project, once we go out and secure a contractor and execute that contract, the money is encumbered for that specific project. So if it is not completed within that fiscal year, it is automatically carried forward into the next fiscal year, unless for whatever reason that project is canceled, and the money is then reallocated somewhere else. But in general, from a budget standpoint, once a project is approved by the board and funded, it will be carried forward from year to year until it is completed or until the board directs otherwise because of a cancellation.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Some of these projects, or a good number of them, also have grant funds associated with them. So that, those grant funds are directly tied to that specific project. So as the administrator said, it carries over from year to year.
Thank you.
All right. President Warren and Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious, do we have projects that have been budgeted that have not been initiated that are greater than three to five years where the funds have carried forward?
Greater than three to five years, yes. We do have capital projects. For example, in public utilities that have been earmarked, that have been greater than three years, particularly large capital projects, but they still remain with that project.
So what happens then is, because I think that, I'm sure that those projects are all important, and, sorry, follow up, Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Those, those projects are all extremely important, and I'm sure that we need to ensure that they're completed. So what is our plan? How do we address those carryforwards? And with new items that are coming up that require our attention, but we don't have the funds available, but we have a lot of funds that have been allocated and we're carrying forward for projects?
And that goes to prioritization of the, of projects, and some are more urgent than others, and based on workload, we've got to prioritize those or available contractors. I'll let Kevin answer to that a little bit, but part of that's what's going to be, this new position that was created was a capital improvement plan manager, is to do that prioritization and make sure that we're staying on, on task.
Right. So, so the projects that are currently funded and budgeted with all the funds allocated to them have been identified, and our intention is to move forward with those projects. As you can see, there's a lot of things that we need to do, and there's a lot of things that we've been doing. And we're, we're doing as much as we can, and we're going to be able to do more now that we have more resources allocated to working on our capital program. And so, you know, hopefully in the next year and, and moving forward, we'll be able to complete more than, than the projects that we've just completed this year. So they're all in, in the plan, they're all in the list, and they're going to get tackled as soon as we can possibly get to those. Okay?
Yes, and I, I think that you're doing a tremendous amount, for sure. There's a lot to, to celebrate. I'm just, I'd just like to ensure that we, that that information is shared with us in the event that priorities are, are changed, if there's anything that needs to happen, there's something that perhaps we should be aware of and know what's moving forward, what is stalled, why it stalled, and if there's anything else that is needed.
Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. And I know I came a couple of minutes late, so I apologize, but this, on my District One, the 43rd Street, that's 49th, right?
No, that's, we're actually going to pave 43rd Street. 49th Street is a future project, it's going to happen in another, probably-
Okay, so that's not this capital. Okay, sorry, sorry, I hadn't heard about the 43rd, so that's fantastic. And then, just curious on how that got prioritized, because I know Echo Lake, they, they're happy about that park project, but how did that get, and I know every park didn't get put into the park bond that we did, how did that get put into like a capital improvements fund versus elsewhere in like the parks budget? And how did that get allocated there?
Which park?
Echo Lake Park Playground. Isn't that interesting?
That's in the park bond program.
Okay, so it's just included within, okay, the capital improvements fund? Yes.
Yeah, the park bond is part of our capital improvement program.
Okay. So like, we wouldn't include then Curry and all those other in my district that are part of that as well?
Curry is in the, it's, it's in the budget. It's not going to happen for another year or more before we get started on that. So we're just showing the stuff that we're going to finish this fiscal year, and then Vladimir's going to go into the stuff that's going to, we're going to finish this coming fiscal year '24. And then there's some other projects that will be moving forward with beyond fiscal '24. We're going to get to those at the end of the presentation, there'll be some big projects there.
Yes.
Well, because I've been telling everybody that we're moving forward with Curry on the current timeline of the, this summer starting, so that's not the case, or?
It's not going to finish this fiscal year.
Okay, so the, okay, understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. I agree with the mayor's comments about getting the word out about these projects. I was just curious if you have any kind of overarching themes or anecdotal situations that cover all of these projects? Because I know that we've been hearing contractors have issues, that things are delayed, and, you know, it's, it's great that we've seen so many things move forward, but I'm just curious, were there any themes that you saw throughout these projects that we should be aware of so that when the community is saying, hey, this isn't moving forward, or we heard about these problems, we're aware of those?
Well, obviously, we have a slide that talks about the challenges. It's a little bit later on in the presentation, but material costs and the time to get materials is still an issue. I think more of the cost is, the cost is more of a problem than the, the lead time on materials. That seems to have improved, although it's still not, we can't just get stuff like next week sometimes with piping materials. So, and then there's a number of projects, like on some of the lift station projects that we put out to bid, they've come in very high, and we're not able to move forward with those until we regroup and figure out how we're going to be able to tackle those because of the fact that the budget, or the bids came in higher than what we were expecting them to. So we've got to figure out how we're going to be able to take those on by allocating money from someplace to be able to, to take those on. But I know lift stations aren't very glamorous, but they certainly are very important. And whenever we come across an obstacle such as a high bid or, or less, less money than the budget than what the contract is, then we, we need to look at other resources that we can allocate to, to be able to move forward with those.
Commissioner, if you, like, if you want, the theme really is costs continue to escalate compared to when we bid these projects. So sometimes they have to be readjusted, and then labor costs continue to be, those, you know, the cost overall is, is the biggest probably theme in terms of what tends to delay things, and, and lack of labor.
And the other, and the other theme, as you can see, we're going back to where we did the pavement condition index back in 2018, and we're tackling those, some of those projects that really had low pavement condition indexes. That's where 43rd Street came from and AE Isaacs. We're going to do another pavement condition index later this year. We're putting that out to bid to have a firm come and reevaluate the pavement conditions, and then we'll reprioritize what streets need to be paved. So we're really tackling a lot of the paving projects that we haven't been able to get to previously. So we're working on those this year and next year.
Great, thank you.
And let me just add a footnote, Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
In addition to the theme or the, the challenges that staff mentioned, we also have had, and are probably getting on the other side of it, you know, staffing challenges, you know, because of reductions in staff, particularly on this side of the operation, that presented a major challenge for this year's budget. You know, I just want to recall the fact that engineering got the highest number of new positions because of the priority on capital projects and trying to get them on the street. So we have given them a higher level of staffing to help with that. On the paving side of it, as the board will recall, for the first time in this year's budget, general fund dollars were approved to help get more work done, but we got to have the staffing. So there've been a number of challenges that we've had, but I think, again, cautiously optimistic that we're getting on the other side of it, what's within our control, anyway.
On the messaging aspect, two, two points. One is that paving index project, once we get a contractor to do that, let's get the word out there, that we're undertaking that process. Make sure we explain to the public that that helps us prioritize the streets that get paved. We have, we as a city have to do a better job of communicating to the public how we reach decisions in that paving index, and we can, again, work with communications on, on messaging. But that is something the public needs to understand. That's how we prioritize which streets get paved sooner rather than later. And, and rather than reacting when people are complaining, let's be proactive about our messaging. The other thing, and I know we're about to get into it, about the projects coming up, just as we will advertise, or should advertise, or communicate the projects that we have completed, I think it's important to get the word out to the public as to the projects that we plan to undertake in the upcoming fiscal year. Again, controlling expectations, managing expectations, but let's do a better job of controlling the narrative when it comes to capital improvement. But now that we have a manager, I, I think we can do a better job of, of controlling the narrative and the messaging on the good work that the city has done and, and plans to do. So I know Diane's listening, so we'll come up with a strategy for, for getting that word out effectively and comprehensively.
Mayor, 100%, that's something that we've talked about very recently, is how do we amp up the communications part? One of, one of the ways to do that is we, we have a website that was created to communicate to the public what the status is on, on all the capital improvement projects. Now that we have a manager in place, I just, we'll be able to update that more frequently and have more information out there, and sharing that through communications and through social media so that folks know what's going on. Absolutely, we have to do a much better job.
And work with the district commissioners and find out what their preference is for how they want to get the word out to the constituents in their district. Let's help them get the word out as they feel is appropriate. Some may use social media, others may want, you know, face-to-face meeting, whatever. But let's make sure the district commissioners are part of that loop as we come up with that strategy. Okay. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I was curious, when you talk about the pavement condition index that you're going to go back out for that, does that include sidewalks at all? Or is that just strictly the roads? Because I-
We're actually going to have an option in that bid for the firm to evaluate the condition of the sidewalks as well.
Okay, thank you. I walk downtown a lot, and those sidewalks, I think, are much better maintained because we're, more people are on them. But recently, I was in another, in another neighborhood and noticed like sinkholes and things that have never been reported. And so I'm just curious if we're, you know, also taking that into consideration in other neighborhoods outside of downtown?
We are, and we are also, we are aware of, of several areas where we do need to replace or repair sidewalks, and there are funds allocated to that. We have, we, last year we budgeted $500,000 in the gas tax to help pay for sidewalk repairs, and we intend to do that again this coming year. So we're hoping to tackle it incrementally, but we have been making good progress with it, and we're, we're going to continue to, to do so. Where it wasn't having, happening, you know, a few years ago, we're starting to put that as a regular project program in place. So with, with Public Works taking the lead on doing that.
I was going to say, I'll, I'll send a, a list of the projects for, these, because these are maintenance, so they don't fall under capital improvement, but sidewalks that have been repaired, Public Works has an extensive list of those. So there's been a lot of work done on that front this year.
Again, let's, let's get the word out. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I'm also very interested in repairing sidewalks as well. But similar to that, what about areas where sidewalks don't exist? Will we be looking at that as well?
That is not as a higher priority with us, although when there is an opportunity for us to be able to put a sidewalk in where one doesn't exist, we do so if it's part of a project. But with the, the condition of a number of sidewalks throughout the city, we really want to focus on trying to get those back where they're ADA compliant and walkable. And so that's kind of where our focus has been. I would think that eventually, in, in a, in a year or two or whatever, that we would be able to address areas where there are no sidewalks. You know, we want to be able to make the city completely ADA compliant. That's going to take a number of years to get there, but it is part of what we're focusing on. It's just that it's a little bit further down on the list than making sure that problem areas are addressed first.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you. Vladimir?
Okay, thank you. So as we move on to the FY 2024 budgets, we are scheduling to 40, about 40 projects, and that will cost us about $159 million in FY24. So some of those projects for FY24, for citywide, about three projects, the Flagler Trail repairs, a small meter replacement, and title valve phase C, which is the large diameter valve. And also Commission District One, about seven projects. Comen Park, having quite a few projects, a park pavilion, the playground, gym, and community center. We're looking to complete in FY24. Commission District Two, two projects, one of them being lift station number 74. For Commission District Three, we're looking at about 10 projects. Roosevelt Estate, ADS sidewalk and traffic calming. The city center ceiling and waterproofing, also the 300 block Clematis North, the alleyway improvement. For Commission District Four, two projects, one of them being fire station number seven. And for Commission District Five, about 16 projects. Washington Road Improvement, looking forward to get that completed. Flamingo Park Neighborhood, both the utility and the milling and resurfacing project for those to be completed in FY24. So some of the pictures of progress, projects that are having some progress. We talked about Comen Park, the roof was just basically completed recently. So some pictures are showing the progress of the work. George Petty Park Playground, the design, what the project would look like. The fifth park concession building. And what the Clear Lake Trail project, which is a lab project, what the final look would look like. And that would complete the, the, some overview of the projects that we have for FY24. And this is a slide that talks about some of the challenges that we kind of touched on a little bit earlier about-
Before you go to challenges, do you have any pretty pictures of the lift stations? I, I kind of get excited about that.
We'll make sure to take some for you, Mayor.
Please, please, please.
I prefer to take the mayor on a tour.
That's probably more fun.
That's fine, you know, where I could touch them, and, yes.
Yes, certainly. You're welcome to visit.
Absolutely.
Yes. So some of the challenges, we talked about the supply chain issue. There are some improvement, but still we're having some delays. Some materials taking us about eight weeks to, to obtain, material costs being increased, labor shortages, and procurement timeframe, trying to get that back to where we used to be previously, and trying to identify certain grant to help us get some of those projects underway. And also, we're looking to develop a master plan that will help us to create future project. And also, one big thing that we saw that used to delay project was the lack of coordination between the different departments. So we are undertaking that to make sure when we have a project, we look at it holistically to get the project moving forward versus being delayed. So those are some of the challenges and opportunities that we are undertaking. Future-
Steph, can you pause? Let, let the board ask any questions on FY24 projects.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. And I know it's not just about the number of projects, there's the other things that go into it. And so please don't take this, I'd like just to have a further discussion. And I'm not just trying to single out District Five, but, you know, I, I'm getting a lot of, in my, my neighborhood meetings, a lot of complaints about roadways and things like that. You know, for this, this current fiscal year, there's 13 projects, and then next fiscal year, there's 16 in District Five. And if you go to District One, I have five for this fiscal year, and then, where's my next fiscal year? One second, seven. How's that determined? Because it just seems like a really big difference between districts and projects given what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing in my district in the north end.
Well, I mean, there's a number of projects that are in District Five that have been in the works for several years, and we're getting to those, and we're, we're working on them and completing them and moving forward with them. In District One, there have been a number of projects that have been identified that have been taking a while for us to be able to, be able to start construction on those. In the, in the next slide, you'll see that some of those things in fiscal year '25 to '28, a lot of those are in the north end of the city that we're planning on working on and being able to, to get those moving. Some big projects that we wanted under- Some big projects that we wanted undertake. You know, we've just got this grant for the, the railroad crossing elimination. We're gonna do a study and prioritize where we wanna put a pedestrian bridge across the FEC railroad. One of those locations that we're looking at is in District One. And as well as, you know, we have the Broadway project that's gonna get underway probably in a few years. We wanna look at possibly doing another major project similar to that on Pinewood because we know that that's in a state of disrepair. But we wanna tackle those as, as a big street scape type of a project in coordination with whatever utilities need to be repaired or replaced in those areas. We also have a 36th Street project that's basically from Australian Avenue all the way to, to Flagler that FDOT is managing that project. And so that's gonna get started sometime next year as well and go on into the following year. So I think next year, Commissioner Ward, you're gonna see a lot more activity in your district with some big dollar projects that I think are gonna be a major enhancements to the, to the, to the residents up there.
Let me follow up with that a little bit because also if you look at some of the projects that are in District Five, some of them are utilities projects. And when we, some of these projects, when they, when we look at road improvements, for example, there are times where that's coming on the heels of a utilities project. And that's been identified as a critical need for that particular area, and that's why that road gets improved. It's not that it was started as a road project. It starts as a utility project that then has a road improvement attached to it. So that's part of it. And then also the Park Bond projects. Some of those were front-loaded more towards the smaller projects, and a lot of those were, were in other districts. There's gonna be some huge ones coming up, obviously, in, in your district with Curry Park. It's gonna be, it's gonna be massive. It's gonna be the biggest one of all. And then Gaines Park as well. So those are two very large capital improvement projects as part of the Park Bond. And as, as Kevin said, then you have some large road projects that are coming up with Broadway being the biggest. So you will see a lot more activity in the next two years, I would say.
Okay, just a follow-up comment. We, we've heard so many promises over the years, and I've only lived, this is my ninth year in that district. And so I just wanna, I, I have to kind of harp on this because the residents in my area just feel like they're continuously overlooked and the promises that happen and, and just, hey, we'll get to it next year, and then it's the year. And I know FDOT is a whole different ballgame and there's no control over that. Maybe if we have an exhaustive list, including some other agencies that are working on projects, it may help. But, you know, I continue to hear, just even last night, when are, when's it our time? When are we gonna see the growth that the downtown and the South End and the West has seen? When is it our time? And so I just have to, again, harp on that.
Yeah, and to that point, one of the things that I think will help is a communications plan for these, for the different districts. But also that the residents understand that these are budgeted projects. So it's not promises that were made that it was never budgeted for. These are budgeted projects that are gonna happen.
At some point, there may need to be a more extensive conversation as to how projects have been prioritized and have gotten on, some are carryover, et cetera. So the public needs to know, you know, we don't start over every year and just say, alright, we're gonna give 13 to District Five, 12 to District, I mean, sometimes these are a progression or continuation of plans that have been, already been in place. It's all about communication of that, as to how these get on the list. And it's somehow, some way, we've gotta do a better job of communicating how the projects get assigned and prioritized.
Let me just add a footnote. If you look at the budget, the vast majority of the projects are carryover. In terms of new money that comes into the budget, it is small by comparison. So that is how we add new projects, but the vast majority of the projects in the CIP plan, you know, are carried forward. And certainly, you know, with the communication effort, I think we can help educate the public and, and keep the word on what we're doing, how it's funded, how it's prioritized. So staff will follow up with the communications director.
Yeah, good. President Warren and then Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you. Residents in District One have also made me aware of some of the concerns that they've had over the years, particularly with Flagler and the flooding on Flagler and where that falls. The perception is that there was a time where there was money allocated for, to address Flagler specifically and that it has fallen below the radar. And they're, they're really crying out to see when that's going to be high on the list.
What area of Flagler are you referring to?
For, uh, north of Curry Park, all the way.
Yeah, that's what we can talk about. That's actually on the list.
The, the North Flagler Drainage Improvements Project is currently underway. We're, and our intention is to be able to put that out to bid this year and start construction on it possibly before the end of this year or early next year. And to have that completed at some time, probably by the end of '24, maybe into '25 is what we're, we're expecting it to happen. So that North Flagler improvements includes water main and sewer, sewer main replacements in the area between 32nd and 35th Street, as well as additional storm drain, infrastructure, and outfalls with title valves on them through that Holly, Holly property, which is up there just south of 34th Street on Flagler. So that project is in the works and you will be seeing some activity on that probably in the next six to eight months. Okay?
Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. If we can just briefly address District Four, since I see that there's three projects, two years, in the largest district by landmass. Is that simply just because of the geography of District Four and the way it's made up? Is it, or is it a combination of our private developments, doing some of the maintenance on these things that we would have to do downtown and in the south and north ends of our city? Just, if you could just give me an idea so that when my constituents in District Four ask the questions, why is District Four only have three projects? Is it because everything's great in District Four, or is it the geography or those private developments doing some of the maintenance?
Well, it's all the above, but particularly you have obviously grassy waters and a lot of the preserved space in that, in that district. And you have a lot of gated communities that do their own maintenance. That, that's the biggest difference. And that's, that's one of the things I preach to people as, as we go to neighborhood association meetings. When they talk about the difference with the suburban neighborhoods out west, whether it's Wellington or Western West Palm Beach, is those neighborhoods are taken care of generally by neighborhood associations, homeowners associations that are gated communities that do their own maintenance. That is the biggest difference between a city like West Palm, the eastern parts, and some of the western suburbs. But there are a lot of projects that are, that are happening in the western districts that are more public utilities related, that I don't get as much visibility and they fall under a different category in our capital improvement plan. But, but those projects are, are there as well.
Just briefly follow up?
Yes.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's worth noting that, you know, sometimes District Four, it's thought by the general public that they get more, that District Four gets more attention just because of, of voting and things like that. But I think people, it's important to understand that, that District Four, actually, a lot of the developments are taking care of their own issues that would ordinarily be burdens upon our taxpayers in general in the entire city. And, you know, the sidewalks in my neighborhood need some work, but my HOA and POA are going to spend the money from money from, from me and from my neighbors to fix those things. So in some ways, District Four is actually less, you know, I won't say less of a burden on the, on the taxpayers, but, you know, they take care of a lot of things themselves.
Yeah, that, that is the case.
Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I have one comment on what we've been talking about, and then I have another question. I agree. I think that, you know, sometimes when we show these slides and we show just very black and white, like, hey, these are the projects that we're working on, it doesn't tell the full story of how we got there. I completely sympathize because I've, you know, met with the residents of the North End as well as in the South End and, and heard both sides of it, that they've been waiting for years, sometimes, you know, a decade for some of these projects. And so, you know, I don't know the best way to communicate that is, you know, I don't know if we wanna start advertising, wow, this took 10 years to get on the books and to get done. But, you know, I, I do understand the frustration of our residents who've been waiting for things to get done. But my question, I was looking at some of these pictures, and I don't know if some of these are true to life. As, I'm looking at the playground pictures as it relates to shade. But if you look at, the first one is Vidado Park. I remember going to the ribbon cutting of this, and the families who were there were talking about how the location of this was just spectacular. Because look, if you see, it's so shaded. So you think about families who are there, kids who are using the slides. They're not burning their legs and arms on, on the equipment. Then you look at the one right before that, Echo Park. It's not under trees, but it does have this huge shade sail. But, you know, again, this is where I was saying, I don't know if this is true to life, but, you know, only half of it is shaded. And then if you flip to page 23, the George Petty Park, there's no shade at all, not a shade sail, not a tree. And it just, I, I realize we're not talking about the construction today, but just as we continue to build these things, that we look at how we're shading it just because I feel like it's only getting hotter in Florida.
Leah would like to respond to that.
I mean, the, the George Petty thing is basically a rendering. I mean, it doesn't really show you the actual condition there. I mean, this is down there off of Washington Road. And, you know, there's no trees in the background. It's, it's the Lake Worth Lagoon. And so really trying to show what the, what the playground equipment's gonna look like.
I didn't recognize that location, so I was like.
It might, are obviously gonna be whatever happens to be there, so.
Okay.
The intention is to provide shade for these, these facilities. Leah wants to add to that.
Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. Yeah, these are, as Kevin said, these are just renderings. George Petty, there, there is a lot of trees where this playground is going. And it's replacing the playground where the existing playground was, which was completely under shade. And the same thing with the Echo Lake is under a lot of trees that are currently there. So ones that you don't see a giant shade sail is because it's under trees and, and the location that it was before. So the, that's what we're doing. Like we did at South Olive, the one slide was not completely shaded, so we did create that shade for that slide.
Great. And I don't know if you guys have seen, you know, driving through our streets lately, because it's summer. So many families are out there using these parks, and I know that they really appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox, and then President Warren again.
Thank you so much. Kevin, I have a question for you about the title, the title valves project. I see that for fiscal year '24, we have under Citywide, Phase 2C. And I saw 2A before. I'm not sure if we have a 2B. But my question is, I'm also getting a lot of calls about flooding in Providenceia Park, which is just south of Palm Beach Lakes and Flagler-ish area. So I'm curious, are the title valves that are going throughout Flagler, will they kind of mitigate the damage throughout all of Flagler? Or do they, I don't know how it functions. Does it just work sort of in the one road where it's located? Or is it something that you think as we start putting title valves along all of Flagler and finish the project, it's gonna help everyone?
Well, the areas that have been identified, obviously, are the ones that have the, the greatest, the, the most problematic. And there are seven locations that are located in the El cid area, as well as some that go all the way up to 9th Street, South Lakeside Court, down to Edmore Road, Monroe Drive, Sunset Road, Cordova Road. Those are the large diameter outfalls that we need to, we're working on the design for that, to put that out to bid. We have grant money associated with both of those two projects. And we're going to put those out to bid and, and, and take those on in the coming year. And so as we go down the list of installing the title valves in the 31 outfalls that we've identified, so we're making the progress towards that. It's taking a little bit longer than we originally expected. But there will be definitely some, some good progress on it in this, in this coming fiscal year.
I just wanna make a distinction here on the title valves and flooding. The title valves improve title flooding issues, which generally tend to be very close to Flagler Drive or on Flagler Drive. They may go a little bit further west. And if it rains during a high tide event, then obviously you can't get the, the, the rainwater's not gonna drain. So whether or not that particular area is rain-induced flooding or title flooding, I think we'll have to evaluate. But I just wanna make that distinction because it may be a title valve that'll improve title flooding issues, but it won't necessarily improve drainage issues that may need to be addressed as well. So we'll have to look at that.
All right, President Ward.
My question is for Ms. Johnson. When, when I look at this, and I have a similar situation to Commissioner Paduzzi, where the majority of my communities are in HOAs, or they're, they're private neighborhoods. But we have an, an agreement with the villages that I believe has expired. Do we anticipate that, that, that expiration of that agreement could impact capital needs? And should we look at anything that they have been addressing and work that into the capital budget?
Yeah, I'm gonna have staff correct me if I'm calling this up incorrectly. The agreement with the HOA on the villages really dealt with the maintenance of the mediums and, and what have you. And what we are in the process of doing is, I think we have the RFP on the street, you know, to get a contractor to handle the services that, you know, they were doing under that agreement. So the maintenance would not be part of the capital improvement program plan, but it is being addressed. Did I state that correctly, Leah? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions, comments before we move on? Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ward?
Can we go back to the funded future projects slide? I don't know if you went, if you're, if you're gonna dive into that more?
We, we're.
We're getting ready to present.
Okay, so then I will have a call, I'll save my question.
So some, some notable funded future projects that we're currently undertaking, that's not complete, that will not be completed either this fiscal year or the next fiscal year, that's all beyond. So we're looking at about '25 to '28 of FY '25 of FY '28. Some of those projects are the Broadway Improvement, which is at 25th to 45th Street, Gaines Park Community Center, Mercer Avenue Improvement, which is a grant-funded project, as well as Parker Avenue, Howard Park Community Center, 36th Street Improvement, 49th Street Traffic Calming and Bicycle Improvement, the Sea Wall Elevation Pilot, the North Flagler Drive Improvement, 32nd, 33rd, and 34th Street, 36th Street Bridge Rehab, Tamaran Avenue Streetscape, and then 26th Street Flagler and Drive and Stormwater Rehab. So those are some of the future projects. There are a lot, but those are a few of them that we would like to mention that will be ongoing.
All right, so you say those are funded, so monies have already been aside for all of these projects then. Can you explain to the audience how these got funded already, but they probably won't be completed until 2025 through 2028, when there may be other projects that could be finished in a shorter timeframe? How do we come up with this list as opposed to other projects that might be done sooner?
Well, a number of these, Mayor, are affiliated with some grant funding. And when that happens, generally the program pushes things out a few years before they can actually get started, it gets into the work program. The Gaines Park Community Center, some of these projects, we'll start construction next year. That's part of the Park Bond Program, as well as the, the Howard Park Community Center is one of the sales tax project that we're gonna put that out to bid as well. 36th Street, 49th Street, the Sea Wall, North Flagler Drainage Improvements has grant funding in it, as well as the 36th Street Bridge. We just found out the other day that we're gonna get some money from the state to be able to do that. And also the 36th Street project is, is funded with grant money that FDOT is, is administering. And the Tamaran Streetscape job has been under construction, but it's gonna be finishing up like at the beginning of, of '25, probably. That's a very huge project and has a lot of complications going on there, but that one will be completed. The Broadway Avenue Improvements is out a few years, that section from 25th to 45th Street, as well as FDOT is undertaking the efforts on the section from 45th up to 59th Street as well. So, you know, in about five to eight, 10 years, Broadway is gonna be completely redone by FDOT, which is fortunate for us because they're gonna be paying for it. And then Parker Avenue Improvements, that project's gonna get started probably later on this year. That has sales tax money. It also has grant funding as, as well in that. And Mercer Avenue is something that we got a grant for a couple of years ago, and that's also out another two years or more before that's gonna get started. So most of these have grant funding affiliated with them that makes them. So most of these have grant funding affiliated with them that makes them not be able to happen as soon as we would like them to, but they will happen, and they're committed funds towards those projects. So, of course, Curry Park is not listed on here, and it should be, and that's our omission. Apologize for that.
And, and that's very good, and as part of the messaging strategy, we probably should get the word out as to how successful we have been in attracting grants for various projects. So when you're talking with Communications, if we can have, I don't know, maybe even a separate category, page in the deck, which talks about Jizzle Grant, Grants Received, in connection with various capital projects, because that is also good news.
Absolutely, Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned grants as well, because we have a number of grant applications that are out there that we could hear back from in the next two to three months, that would, some of them are fairly significant grant applications. So we may be getting additional funds and funding additional projects here very soon.
Yeah, so as we're sharing news, let, let's talk about the grants we have received, so the public knows about it. And I, I don't want to talk about grants we've applied for until we actually get them, but.
Right, no.
You know, but we could keep that list updated, because again, while it may not be the completion of a project, the, the fact that we are receiving grant monies, I think is a significant statement, that we're well on the way to completing a project just by getting the grant monies themselves, so.
Yeah, totally, totally. And one of the challenges with these projects, particularly the, the, the road projects that are long-term projects like Broadway, is we'll make a grant announcement, but it's a three, five-year process to get to the end of the road, no pun intended. And so, keeping that messaging going for that period of time is a challenge. We got, we got to figure out with Communications how to remind people that those funds are still there, and the project's going to happen. It's just, it's got a timeframe that it has to go through.
Maybe we do it once a year, I mean, you know, just, just to remind people where we are, but to put on this. But you, you know, you could work that out with Communications from.
Let me, let me ask a question if I could, Mayor. On the grant side, to assist our efforts with going after grants, I know we brought on the Grants Administrator in the Mayor's office, but didn't we add a grants position within engineering to just focus on those types of grants?
Yes, so we, we were fortunate to be able to, had a Grants Project Administrator Position, which we just recently hired. He started just in the last month. And his primary function is going to be in compliance with the grant requirements. There's lots of documentation that needs to be provided to the grantors to satisfy those requirements. There's, there's a whole lot of, a myriad of, of documentation that needs to be provided to them. So applying for a grant, identifying grants to go for is one thing, but once you get it, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in order to comply with those things, so that we can receive the funds from the grantor as we move forward and complete the projects. And so, that's a, that's an instrumental position, that, very, very thankful that we have that. So we've got a strategist, we've got an administrator, and we're looking for every opportunity we can to, to get funding for whatever projects we want to try to help to fund. And so, you can see, we've got thirty-nine something million dollars in grant funding that we've identified that are all in place, and we're going after more and more. And so, you know, some of those projects are underway, some of them are going to be deferred until a few years from now because of the, the requirements of that program. But, you know, doing a message like you, like you requested, as far as what we got and what we're, where we are with all the grant funding every year, I think that's a great idea, and we'll work on doing that.
Okay, President Warren, and then Commissioner Warren.
Kevin, do any of these grants have, like, sunset dates? And, and if they do have those sunset days, does that affect where they fall in priority as well?
Absolutely. They all have a timeline on them that we need to meet. And so, some of those are out into twenty-twenty-six, some of them are this year, some of them are next year. And we work towards prioritizing how we're going to tackle these projects based on what those grant sunset date requirements are. So we're very conscious of that, and active in making sure that we work, complete those projects within that timeframe, so that we don't lose out on funding.
Commissioner Warren.
I have a couple, so let me know if you want me to ask just one, and then.
Just go ahead, guys.
Okay, all right, so Thirty-Sixth, that's, is that from Sunset all the way to Flagler, that project?
Thirty-Sixth Street is from Australian Avenue to.
Sunset, okay, okay, perfect. And then, thank you for clarifying on Tamaran Ave, because it was like twenty-two million for additional. So that's the entire project from, from when it started, and when did it start?
That project started in twenty, twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two, so the entire Tamaran Avenue is going to be finished by, we're saying, twenty-twenty-eight, the max?
No, no, it'll actually be finished probably at the beginning of twenty-five.
Okay. So, leading to Broadway, one of the first community meetings that I went to, moving back to West Palm Beach, was in twenty-fourteen, and that was visioning for Broadway. Correct me if I misheard you, but you said that that could potentially now be another ten years until that's completed?
I was referring. I was referring to the area that's north of Forty-Fifth Street. From Forty-Fifth to Fifty-Ninth Street probably is going to be several years out.
Okay. Now, how do we, because I know, working with the CRA, trying to figure out a way that we can balance that, because I feel like, you know, further north we get, they feel like, okay, you know, attention's been given to Spruce and Old Northwood, and, you know, there's Northwood Legacy that needs help, Northwood Harbor. What are we doing to offset the fact that we'll probably be finished with Twenty-Fifth to Forty-Fifth way before those neighborhoods further up Forty-Fifth to Fifty-Ninth get attention? Are we thinking about how to offset that disparity?
Before Kevin can answer that, I want to clarify something on Broadway, because the visioning that took place in two thousand fourteen was just that, it was visioning. There was no funding in place, there was changes to the, the plan, because FDOT was not in agreement with what was being proposed on, on Broadway. So the real, in terms of, like, the real visioning and, and locking in of funds took place, I believe, in two thousand twenty, if I'm not mistaken, around there. So there was a big gap there where people heard about it, and then it just stopped because the project didn't move forward. The difference now is it has been funded, so it's really about a, it's really about a three-to-six-year cycle when it'll get completed. But I'll, I'll let Kevin address some of the other stuff.
Yeah, so Broadway was actually in a lane repurposing program that we applied for, like, in two thousand fifteen or something like that. And it was in the program, and then when it got kind of near where we were going to be able to start with that, FDOT told us that they were no longer going to support the lane repurposing. And so, we scrambled and came up with an alternative section of Broadway, where we would keep two lanes in each direction and provide for a multi-use trail. And that was successful with FDOT, we did a lot of effort to convince them to do that, we did traffic studies, safety audits, all kinds of things to be able to do that. But it, it salvaged the project and re, 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 or redefined what the project was going to be. But, and got FDOT to take on the responsibility for funding that. The caveat to that, though, was that it sort of like got out of line and had to go back to the end of the line and start over in the timeframe period. But it wasn't going to happen, what was originally planned. We were able to salvage something out of that and be able to move forward with that. It's just that we had to move the timeframe out a few years from where it was previously envisioned.
But I think you wanted, the areas north, those, those neighborhoods. So if you're talking about road conditions, that'll be part of, when we do the, the evaluation, the new evaluation of the road condition, because some of those aren't on here yet, because we haven't evaluated it. So that, those will then get prioritized based on what their condition is, on that, what the index says. So if some of the conditions of the roads in those northern sections need attention, then that'll be part of, typically, gas tax is what we use for that. And there's been some general funds that were allocated as well, so, depends on the conditions.
Thank you, and my final question, where's the Sea Wall Elevation Pilot, where's that target area?
That's primarily down, near, near the, the, yeah, near the Bristol, and up near the, the bridge along Flagler. There's that area that I was identified as the worst condition, and we received that grant funding just recently. And we're moving forward with putting out a solicitation for a design firm to start working on what we need to do for that, so.
In whose house are street lighting projects? Who handles that? Is that engineering?
Yes, it is.
F car.
All right, do we have any information available about priority of those projects, which ones are coming? I know we had went through, excuse me, an extensive prioritization process some time ago.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of projects that we're currently working on. We're working with FDOT and FPNL to replace a lot of the lights on South Dixie, basically from Southern Boulevard to the south end of the city, as well as we're starting up a big project on Douglas Avenue right now that's going to go from Second to Tenth Street. And that, those lights are going to start going up in another few weeks, and so.
I don't know if we, if those are listed, but that should be part of the, is it up there?
Yes.
If some of those are up there.
Yes.
Number nine Douglas Avenue light, okay, fine, let's just make sure information goes out about those lighting projects as well, because we get a lot of emails on those. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much. I wondered if you can remind me when the Parks Bond has to be used by? And I'm curious if all the parks are on the CIP, or are there other parks that are not here? I don't remember how many parks we're supposed to have, I don't, it don't seem like I see every single one listed here, but I'm just curious if we're going to, just making sure that we're going to hit that, that target date.
So, yeah, there's, there's really not a set target date for the Park Bond expenditures. We keep, keeping track of it, because we don't want to fall too far behind, but there's not a specific set timeframe as far as, some of these, some of the projects already been, were completed last year for the Park Bond. As was mentioned, actually, for some reason, we omitted Curry, that's a huge one. And then there are some projects that are further on down the road that are not listed here, like the Aquatic Center and some other things. But for the most part, a lot of the projects were already, have been, been completed already, that were smaller projects. And then we've captured a lot of them here, and some of them are more maintenance-related, but.
And if I, if I can add.
Don't we have a, a schedule that we follow for all of those projects under the Parks Bond?
We do, we have a schedule, and we can get you that schedule, that, that shows when they're all supposed to be completed.
Circulate that to all the Commissioners, please. Vladimir, you had something to say on that point?
Yes, that's what I was going to add, that we have a schedule, that detects when, and keep in mind, the presentation only focused on twenty-three and twenty-four, and some of the big projects that we wanted to mention.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions before Vladimir continues the presentation? Okay, proceed, sir.
And I think that was the end of it, and we talked about all the questions, if there's any, there's any more, we'll entertain some additional ones.
Very good. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Okay, okay, Commissioner Fox.
Sorry, I just want to say thank you so much for this. I know that it's not always, like you said, Kevin, it's not always the most glamorous topic, but it is, I think, one of the most important. We obviously have a lot of aging infrastructure in our city, and our, I think our residents are just so appreciative of all the work that's going on. So thank you for this presentation.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, when you were flipping through the slides, I saw it, and I don't think we went over it. Can you just give us an update on the Phipps Park Concession Building?
Yes, that is currently in progress. They started construction maybe a few months ago, and that's scheduled to be completed by next fiscal year.
And I also wanted to make a similar comment to Commissioner Fox. I will say something else that really struck me was the institutional knowledge that you all shared with us on some of this, you know, visioning and, you know, working with FDOT and other entities, it's, it's very helpful in understanding the full picture, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, on to.
Thank you, staff.
Yes, great job, staff. On to the Fire Assessment Fund, Station Eight update, and Fiscal Year Twenty-four Proposed Budget. Chief Matty and Mr. Frank. Administrator Johnson, did you want to say anything to tee this up, or?
Sure, Mayor. This is, again, the annual presentation that we present to the Board regarding, the focus in the past has been specifically on the FY twenty-four Proposed Budget, but given the focus, you know, and prioritization of fully staffing Fire Station Eight, you know, I thought it would be appropriate to give the Board an update on how that is going, and then we'll get to the annual presentation for the FY twenty-four Proposed Budget. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Matty for the update.
Good morning, thank you, Ms. Johnson, Mayor, Commissioners. Happy to give you a Fire Station Eight update, and as Commissioner Lambert stated, I'm going to give you a little bit of a historical perspective for those of you out there watching that may be interested in where we've come from. So this is a Fire Station Eight zone map. It shows you kind of from the Iron Horse to the east, and all the way out into a little bit of Locksahatchee in the west, and covering our fire station off of Northlake Boulevard, right there, just across from Ibis. So Fire Station Eight was put into service as a part-time unit back in two thousand six. It was staffed part-time in a construction trailer with three firefighters. It was an advanced life support engine, so we had all the medical equipment on the fire truck, and it was staffed, as I said, part-time, just in the daytime. So they ran out of that trailer for several years. And then, in two thousand eight, we moved into the temporary trailer, which you see in the photograph on the left, over on Northlake Boulevard, on the north side of the road. And it transitioned at that point from having just the fire truck to having the fire truck and the rescue truck, and the crew would take the truck based on what the type of emergency was. But they did that for a number of years, transferred into twenty-four-hour shifts, so there was some, but some coverage out in that corridor twenty-four hours a day, and then we got the fire station built a few years ago. So what we had back then, they called it adaptive response, another term was called either/or. So the firefighters would have their gear in the middle of the truck room, and based on the emergency, go to whichever truck was appropriate with three firefighters. So now, we added those three firefighters to the other unit with the assistance of the assistance of, excuse me, the SAFER grant last year. So we got those thirteen onboard, now we have two, two fully-staffed units, full-time, out there, running calls in that area. So what has this done for us? So going back several years, this is just our, the percentage of the time that nobody was in the station to take the first unit call. So we were up and down, getting close to twelve percent of the time, where the firefighters at Station Eight weren't there, they were on another, on another call for service, and we were having to wait for mutual aid to come from out in Royal Palm and Locksahatchee, or to the east over by Iron Horse. So since we put that rescue truck in service full-time, I want to say in May, it was zero percent of the time that nobody was home to take the call. And so we're, I believe the number was point eight percent of the time, so we're doing, doing excellent, seeing an excellent change there. And just another perspective, looking at it in terms of response times, previously, the turnout time was over a minute, and that's just the average, whereas citywide, fifty-four seconds was what we were doing. But because the firefighters had to, you know, pick the truck and move their gear and all that stuff, there were longer turnout times. Since October, we put that truck in service, we're down on par with what's, we're seeing citywide. And again, with the total response time before, response times were longer, because the firefighters were coming from out of zone or were coming from a hospital, you see the travel time is, is consistent in the west, whether it's on the left, right here, Fire Station Eight prior to. So our travel time isn't going to change just due to the geography out there, but we did see a dramatic decrease in the total response time to Fire Station Eight by having that second unit staff, so, very good result.
So our investment has paid off, obviously.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions?
I would also like for you to work with Communications.
Yes, sir.
Because I think there's a good story there as well, showing that our investment in equipment and personnel is paying off. And let's see if we can come up with a, some kind of story to, to get out to our residents.
Absolutely.
Particularly the ones in District Four.
It'd be our pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you. This is great news. I mean, that was the one thing that bothered me the most, was the eight-minute-plus response time. To get it down to a response time that's equivalent of, of response times in other areas of the city is fantastic, so kudos, and great job. And I thank my, my fellow Commissioners and Mayor and your staff for making this a reality, and, and obviously to the Fire Department for, for all that you do for our residents. Could you talk a little bit about, I know that there was some changes, one of the county stations at Jog and Beeline, Station Seventeen, often provided backup to our area, to, to Zone Eight, and they had a two-vehicle, two units operating out of a temporary facility, I think it was a trailer there across from Iron Horse, and they got rid of that rescue. That was a good backup rescue for, for the rest of, of eight, Zone Eight, and they've gone to a four-man engine. Can you talk about how that has complicated things for us, or are we, you know, in just as good of a position? as good of a position now, being down one rescue in that area? Is, is nine able to handle the, the overflow? Is, is Gardens assisting us? How's that working?
Sure, sure, thank you. So what, what Palm Beach County Fire Rescue did at that fire station was they, they staffed a four-person engine company instead of having the two units and the rescue there. So we are still currently relying on, for backup rescue purposes, Station Nine, Palm, Palm Beach Gardens, and then Palm Beach County out in the acreage. So fortunately, with the capabilities we have on the trucks for, for medical especially, getting that stabilization of the patient in the first couple of minutes can be done as well with the firetruck, because we carry those, that advanced life support equipment on that rig. So it gives us time to, because those are the first few critical minutes where CPR could be started, where, you know, oxygen could be applied, whatever those, those things are, bleeding could be controlled, those first few minutes of, of patient contact are critical, and then the other rescue would come from wherever, whatever unit would be closer at the time.
Thank you, follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
So should we, we be looking at potentially having another res- rescue available, a city rescue available in that area, either at, at eight or at nine, or, you know, I think eight or nine would be the closest to that area?
So Fire Station Nine is currently now a rescue truck that's functioning out of a trailer, that's on the Haverhill and Roebuck corridor out there. Ideally, in the future, that would be a fully-staffed brick-and-mortar station as well. So that would be, you know, future growth, as we see growth in that area, just as we saw growth out in Station Eight's area. We got a firetruck, got a, you know, a station down the line. I think, you know, as growth comes in the city, you would shoot for those goals, but the immediate, the immediate availability would be mutual aid through those other agencies and then having Station Nine as that backup, because then we would, if Rescue Nine went to the call to backup eight, you would have an Engine Nine in service in that Roebuck and Haverhill corridor.
And then just one last follow-up.
Sure.
And so Station Eight isn't primary, isn't first due to the Iron Horse community, then it's Station Seventeen and then Nine, and then, well, Gardens would be for the second due for rescue, or first due for rescue?
Gardens would be first due for rescue.
First due, okay.
Yes.
So I just, would, would just suggest at some point, we look at whether we're providing, you know, the appropriate level of service with regard to, you know, rescue in that area. At some point, I know that Station Nine is pretty busy, it's one of the busier rescues around, and so maybe we need to look at that, which provides a comprehensive coverage. I know we're talking about Zone Eight, but having that backup there would also help, you know, Zone Eight and, and the rest of the city.
Sure, and, and Station Nine is our, if I can add, is our newest fire station as far as time in service, and we put that into service in twenty sixteen, January of twenty sixteen, in a strip mall, out of a storefront, just because their calls were, you know, the, the response times in that zone were long. And Fire Chief at the time recognized that, and, and we got that ball rolling, so as soon as that truck went into service there, we saw over a minute and a half, just like Station Eight, just saw over a minute and a half improvement in response times, just right out of the gate from day one. So having that coverage with the growth that's coming in that area is going to be key in the future.
Thank you.
President Warren and then Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Great job identifying the SAFER grant and receiving those funds. That's not easy work.
No, it is not, thank you.
It was tremendous to be able to make this happen. Is Station Eight current, is it fully staffed?
It is fully staffed.
Perfect.
We have an engine and a rescue twenty-four hours a day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for all that you're doing. I have a question, just looking at this map and seeing Avenir, for example...
Sure.
Outside of the map, and just, when you're talking a little bit about, I guess, partnering and having backups with either the county or Palm Beach Gardens or whoever it might be, I guess, can you talk a little bit about what that looks like for the future? I know, you know, there's all these other developments that are not in West Palm Beach, but they are sort of across the street from West Palm Beach in this area, and I know that, I'm sure that we're giving them backup as well, but it, do you communicate with them to see what their staffing plans are going to be in the future and things like that, to make sure that we, you know, if we're ever called to be a backup for them, that we are making sure we're taking all that into consideration as well as we staff up in Station Eight?
Sure, thank you. We, I do know that the, Palm Beach Gardens has future plans for a fire station in that area that will be geographically close to our station, however, just road-wise, travel distance-wise, it, it's not, it's closer on the map as the crow flies, but on, on the road, it's, it's significantly deeper into that development. I don't know what their specific staffing plan is. I have heard that it was going to be a fully-staffed station, but I don't know what they've attained as far as funding for that goes. But I do know that in the interim, we have run some construction accidents in that, as that construction has been going on in there, we've run calls in there, and, and we do continue, Palm Beach Gardens, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, and West Palm, all along that area are always working together, covering each other's zones. So it's, it's, it takes a long time to get places out there, so everyone's always covering. Thank you.
Commissioner Paduzzi?
Just to follow up to Commissioner Fox's question, do we have a timeline for them putting a station out there in that western community of, of Palm Beach Gardens? Just because I know that that has been a tremendous, I won't say drain on, on our, on, on us, because we do respond as the primary in that area. But do we have an idea, and do they have anything temporarily out there right now?
To, to my knowledge, they do not have a temporary, but I will inquire about their, their timeline of, of whether or not it got funded. I should see their chiefs tomorrow.
Because as they get bigger, they're, we're only going to be called on more outside of West Palm, and, which is fine, I mean, they come in, Gardens comes into West Palm all the time, County comes into West Palm all the time to assist. Fewer times now that we have Station Eight fully staffed.
Right, right.
We're always going to be helping each other, especially out there in the kind of remote areas, but it would be nice if they were really planning and not just relying on us.
Sure, and, and that has been communicated as part of their plan, but I don't know where they're at with that funding, so I'll inquire about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Chief Matty? Well, again, thank you, Chief. Great, great news, great report.
Thank you.
Work with Communications on putting something together...
I will, thank you.
...to get out to our citizens. Thank you. Mrs. Front?
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Bridges Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. We're almost there, Fire Assessment Fee Fund. So the brief history on the Fire Assessment Fee, the Commission adopted the ordinance in two thousand eight that established the annual reoccurring special assessment for your fire services. Please keep in mind that that is fire service and it excludes your EMS costs. Ordinance forty-one forty-one dash oh-eight essentially says you can utilize the special assessment for fire services, land, capital, equipment, people, insurance, everything except EMS. A special assessment is a charge that is utilized or run against your real property, and it's there because it's providing a benefit to that property. So different than your general property taxes that can be used for a general purpose, the special assessment has to be tracked and utilized specifically for the items stated within the ordinance. We have a special assessment at the city for stormwater as well as fire services. Your fire assessment fee helps provide the comprehensive fire services, whether it's fire suppression, prevention, or other fire services. It offers a value to the residents because it is protecting their improvements on their property. It helps reduce the cost of fire insurance as well as enhancing the market perception and property values. Our fiscal year twenty-four proposed fire assessment fee of one hundred dollars will remain the same. It has been that one hundred dollars since FY twenty twenty. With a flat, a flat fee at this point, we are projecting the same level of revenue for fiscal year twenty-four. That ebbs and flows based on development, but the trend right now is looking at that eight million number for the fire assessment fee. Looking at the expenditures in general by category, comparing your fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget to the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, our personnel services for those individuals within this fund have increased based on the projections that are in the budget. We have your transfers out and your reserve for capital outlay, which I'll discuss a little more in detail on the next slide. So included in the Fire Assessment Fee Fund, we have nine firefighters, five equipment maintenance staff, including the Assistant Fire Chief, various materials and services that are directly related to the personnel that are allocated to this fund. The transfers outline item covers moving funds out to the debt service fund to pay off our debt costs. We've had a significant reduction in, in the debt payments coming down as we're nearing or paying off some of the bonds, so that's positive. In the FY twenty-four budget, we also have a transfer out for capital purchases for the fire prevention vehicle, the two high-water vehicles to assist us during flooding events or hurricanes, as well as the decontamination washer. We also have an amount in reserve for capital outlay for future vehicle replacements based on the vehicle replacement plan. These are the upcoming key dates as it relates to the preliminary fire assessment rate and chronic nuisance. You may remember that those go together, and they're a special part of the budget process, where we have the preliminary hearing on July twentieth, the final fire assessment rate resolution, and chronic nuisance will go on August twenty-first. Then September eleventh is your first public hearing for the budget and the mill rate, and September twenty-seventh, we'll be looking for our final public hearing and adoption of the budget. Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters. Do you all have anything for the good of the body, commissioners? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you, staff. Great job.
Thank you, staff.